Good?
Yeah.
All right. Time is 7:30. I'll call this meeting of the Yardley Borough Council to order. Please rise with a pledge of allegiance to our life. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Begin with our roll call this evening.
Mr. Breha?
Here.
Mr. Sigal Morris?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Diner?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Present.
Mr. Grab?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Two seconds.
Say "here." With seven members present, we have a quorum. And before we go any further with our agenda this evening, it's been quite a three weeks in Yardley since we last met. So I'd like to offer Mayor Harding the opportunity to say a few words now as head of our police department, head of our emergency management. It's Mayor Harding.
So I appreciate that, President Breha. So I was going to make a remark during my mayor's time, but I gladly do it now. And what I was going to do was just read something that I had written in the past, and I'll do that, and hopefully I can get through without getting too choked up, so I apologize in advance if I do. So it said, this is obviously from the past weeks. "I had an opportunity to visit Chief Kelly in the hospital today due to injuries he suffered while responding to a call for service. And from his hospital bed, our chief, who is a husband, father, son, and friend of many, was most concerned about his family, his department, and the Yardley Borough community. Words cannot express my admiration for him and for the members of our Yardley Borough Police Department who exude the core values he preaches and lives by: integrity, loyalty, respect, and courage. Chief Kelly and our entire department demonstrated each and every one of these qualities. We are blessed as he will recover. But do take your time with your family, do not take your time with your family and friends for granted. Split-second moments can change lives. And for those who put themselves in harm's way to protect others, these moments can come all too soon. Please keep Chief Kelly in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you to the residents of our amazing community for your support, cooperation, and understanding throughout this event and into the coming days. And as mayor, thank you to each and every public official, emergency service provider, and police officer that assisted us today. There are too many to mention, from all over the county and from Pennsylvania to New Jersey. Please know Yardley Borough is forever grateful and will not forget your selfless willingness to help when called upon." Those are my thoughts that day after or today. Obviously, I extend them. It is a normal council meeting, but it is amazing to be back and be sitting here with you. So we thank you for your service. We thank the department. We thank everyone involved, council, the borough. We did this as a team, and we're glad we're all here today. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. With that, we'll launch right into our agenda. First up is community announcements. This would be an opportunity for first members of council, and then I'll extend the offer to the public to share any announcements for the good of the community, such as upcoming events. Anything from council for community announcements?
On Friday, there is, we've carried the load that we work with so closely. We are having, they do a September 11th remembrance event. And this year, it's on Friday, the 10th, where we go to the National Cemetery in Washington Crossing and help straighten the headstones that are there. It's a great two hours of volunteer time. I think it's like 9:00 to 11:00-ish. I'll post the details. But anyone is welcome to come to volunteer. All you have to do is just send me an email or call or text if you're coming and show up at the National Cemetery. It's a great way for kids, families, adults, whatever you want, just to come out and spend some time.
Thank you. Any other community announcements from council? Anything from the public? I see Mr. Applebaum, you usually do, if you come to the mic.
Well, I just wanted to take a minute to thank a few people. It's, Music on Main has been incredibly successful this season, considering all that we've been through with the pandemic of the past year. And I don't think, sometimes when I'm making my announcements during the shows, I forget to, I leave out people that I wanted to thank. So if I could just do that quickly now, I'd love to do that. So to the, obviously to the people at executive, at experience Yardley, I thank them. But we work with a very close-knit team here at Borough Hall. And in fact, without them, we wouldn't be able to accomplish what we do. So I'd like to point out that on that team is, well, here, well, Sergeant Rescueraker for emergency management services. I'd like to thank the chief for his guidance with policing and other safety issues. Of course, Paula and Patty for helping me stay in line. Make sure I don't want to talk to you. And, you know, let me know when things are falling to crack. So again, I'd like to thank you and let you know that the success of that event is also because of you. And thank you, council, for the support that you give our nonprofit, because without it, we wouldn't be able to do it. And President Breha, thank you. I saw you were in the audience the other day. So it's always great to see people, not just from the community, but from council there, to show their support. So thank you. I'll step away.
Thank you. Any other community announcements? Hearing none, we'll move right into the public comment portion of the meeting. And this is the part of the meeting where members of the public may address council regarding items that do not appear on our agenda. If you would like to address council regarding an item that does appear on the agenda, you will be given the opportunity to do so during council's deliberation of that particular business item. Members of the public are asked to please come up to our front microphone, state their name and address for the record, and keep their comments to three minutes. And I would like to reiterate, because I know in the past we've gotten away from this, but it is important, everybody come to the microphone. Those who are watching from home cannot hear if you do not. So with that, I will ask for a public comment. Please come to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Johnson Mullin. I'm the owner of Yardley Town Center. I've appeared before committee, council before regarding the interest that I had in Yardley Borough and in the town. I've been here for more than 30 years, not as a resident, but as a member of this community. And I appear here tonight. I've got a prepared statement that talks about some of the issues that I'm greatly concerned about. But in the interest of time, I just want to say that as a member of the community, and on behalf of some of the residents and other business people, we have kind of a right to expect that the borough and its professionals would do their job in terms of enforcing ordinances that are on the books. I recently opened a new store last Monday at the shopping center, pursuant to all of the proper applications, permits, architectural drawings, and all of the things that are necessary to comply with the laws and the ordinance of the town. That's not being done by other people. And I speak specifically about La La Lobster. You all know the concerns that I have. They go far beyond parking, because I think that's probably the most well-known issue. But aside from that, I think that while I have a right to expect this to happen, I need to know we're going to get the cooperation of everybody so that everybody is playing by the same rules and on a level playing field. To that end, I want to see if we can open a discussion in the very near future, the next few days, to be sure that your professionals and your boards will enforce these regulations. Because if we don't, we only have one course to take to make sure that that happens. That's probably in a civil matter, to make sure that these laws are compliant with by everybody. I've been to many of your meetings. I was here when Jim Kane came to see a zoning guidance for the next quarter we're going to open in Yardley, and that is co-ordtori, is moving, expanding. It's a great story for Yardley, who just a couple of years ago had lots of vacancy in this town, and I see it's able to fill up. We appeared here, Jim and I did, to ask for a variance for the parking, which we proved we could comply with. And again, to file all of the necessary permits, applications, do all of the things by your rules. We just expect you to make everybody in the town to the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment tonight? Ms. Taylor? Saw her first.
Susan Taylor, 35, Look Over Lake. After observing, I believe, the last council meeting with Facebook, first of all, I hope that you're going to use some of the funding that's potentially coming to the borough to upgrade the sound system that you're currently using. And I'd like to report that Mr. Breha is the only person that one can consistently hear on council. And please emphasize that people sitting here need to speak directly into the microphone. It happened last time, and one of the speakers pushed the microphone away, and I just went, "Okay, abandon all hope." So I think it would be very, very helpful, you know, to ask people and remind them that they do have to speak directly into the microphone so that the Facebook experience isn't just an exercise in frustration. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are good points. And to your question about the use of some of the funding we have coming in from the rescue plan, an upgraded sound system for this room is absolutely on the list of things we're looking at. You know, just like everyone else, we're aware of the need to get some of these hybrid solutions in place when it comes to our meetings. Ms. Perlmutter?
Thank you. Dawn Perlmutter, 18 West College Avenue, and candidate for Yardley Borough Council. First, I would like to recognize the 13 U.S. service members killed in the Kabul, Afghanistan airport attack. All heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice in service of our country. I would like to follow up on Mr. Simone's comments, because I have been bringing code enforcement issues to your attention for several years. And if you do have any kind of meeting, I would certainly like to be part of that, since I have been on top of this issue for years. Although I would like to clarify some things. He mentioned that Jim Kane had gone for a variance. As you're aware, he went for a variance for the taproom. And prior to that, he was in violation of the Yardley Borough ordinance for over two years by having a public restaurant when he was only limited for a café at the tannery. He got his variance even though most of the people who showed up, the residents, were against it. There were very specific conditions as part of that variance. And Jim Kane, Scott Barney, and all the other owners of the vaults and the tannery are already, not one month away, in violation. They have put, they were limited to no outdoor dining, not because of the COVID issue, but because of the noise issue, because it's so close to residential neighborhood. There are five tables that were put outside in open disrespect for the borough. I also think that we need to have code enforcement start acting on these things. I also would like to bring up, you brought up the sushi place, Cabo Y Tore, and how they're meeting every regulation. That was being converted from a liquor store to a bar, restaurant. I would like to know how all that plumbing and EDUs went in without going before the sewer authority. That's another very huge issue in this town, where people are jumping to the front of the line when there's moratoriums. It's not going through the proper channels. So I do agree that we have an enforcement problem, and I would certainly like to be at any meeting that you have to discuss it. I also would just like to say that as far as threatening lawsuits, I think it's unproductive. I think it's manipulative. And if you have a suit, just file it or go home. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any additional public comment this evening? Going once, going twice, and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion of meeting. Next item is consideration of the consent agenda dated for today, September 7. That includes approval of the minutes from our last August meeting, approval of the bills list dated today, three certificates of appropriateness. They are 21-25 for a sign at East Afton Avenue, 21-26 for a fence at 37 South Main Street, and 21-27 for exterior doors at 9 South Main Street. There's also an event permit for Beer Fest and an event permit for Music on Main, which I believe includes additional rain dates. Would any member of council like for a particular item to be considered separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none is our motion to approve the consent agenda for today, September 7. Just a second.
Second.
Becca.
All right. Motion made, Mr. McCann, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any questions, comments from council? Questions from the public?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, the Beer Fest is the one we always have at Fitzgerald Field, correct? It's not a special event, kind of, for up at?
Correct. It's the same as for a number of years.
And I do have some questions on the bills. There's a check for, check number 19249 for Ray Bar for $6,743.54. I've seen this being come up before. Not sure what that represents, if it's equipment or?
Computer equipment.
Computer equipment for the new, for the police or for?
The server.
Yes, our server.
Oh, okay. Okay. And another item was the American Express card. Again, $1,585.84. Again, just curious what that would represent.
Right. So I know we've discussed this before, the AMEX we use as, you know, a company might use a purchasing card, so incidental expense expenses. It is reconciled every month, and it is presented to council with the invoices, with the receipts attached to the statement to justify those expenses. So on the bills list, it's obviously the payment to AMEX, but we do have the supporting documentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of approval of today's consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Next up is our report from Chief Kelly.
Thank you, sir. My first item is thanks to the police department for their outstanding work over the last three weeks led by Sergeant Golden and Corporal Carr, both of which were with us in the back tonight. They've been working extended hours, almost to the point of exhaustion, first to deal with the shooting on August 18, and then most recently to deal with the high-water event. I'd like to thank them and their supporting officers for everything they've done to step up in my absence. Second item is our monthly statistics. In August of 2021, the police department handled 560 free calls for service, issued two parking tickets, we issued 69 ruling traffic citations, investigated seven motor vehicle accidents, and made two arrests, neither of which were for DUI. And that concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. Next item tonight is manager's report. Ms. Johnson, we have a few items today.
First, I just want to say that the first trip of the budget is on track for 2021. I've been spending a lot of time on that. And I also wanted to echo what the chief says about the police department, especially Sergeant Golden. He did a great job. So apparently, all the guys that stepped up and were there, not only for the chief, but for us, and then especially with our high water last week. And then some of my agenda items. The first thing I have is the MMO that is for our pension plans. It's something that I have to calculate every year, and council has to view it and approve it. And it's for our minimum municipal obligation for our pension plans. So for 2022, our MMO for the police pension plan is $70,036. And for the non-uniform, it's $4,973.
All right. If I could rephrase this, is this just a motion to approve the resolution for MMO?
No, do it.
All right. So we need a motion to approve the minimal municipal obligation for both our police and non-uniform pension. Motion was made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Are there any questions or comments from council? Anything from the public on this item? Ms. Perlmutter? If you could just to the?
I'm sorry. Who does the non-uniform pension? It's mine.
That's just yours, right.
Okay. I was just curious.
Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to zero.
My second item is Resolution 2107, which is another one that we have to pass every year, and it's to waive the required officer contribution for calendar year 2022 only. And again, it's something that we have to do every year, and we don't have the officers paying to get that.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 21-07 waiving the required officer contributions?
So we?
Motion, Ms. Sigal Morris, seconded by Mr. Ross, or the other way around? Any questions, comments from council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to zero.
And my final item is for our salt contract. And every year, we have to go out to bid. We do it with bucks down in consortium. They follow the same bidding requirements, and they were open on August 25. And Morton Salt, once again, did win the bid. So I asked to accept bid for Morton Salt. It's $57.88 delivered, $57.00 undelivered per ton. Again, something we have to do every year.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson to accept the 2021-2022 salt bid from Morton Salt for $57.88 per ton delivered and $57.00 per ton undelivered. Any questions from council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you. With that, let's move on to Ms. Coletti for some engineering updates and reports.
So for general updates, I don't have anything different to report other than what was provided to the council. My agenda report, so unless anybody has any specific questions, and we have been moving to the specific projects.
Let's go right ahead.
Awesome. So I'll start with the easy one first. I'm going to start with the sidewalk project. We received verbal approval of the HOP, which is very exciting. We are waiting for the physical permit. But in the meantime, the agenda item that I have is permission from council to advertise the project and go out to bid.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Mr. McCann to advertise phase two for bid of the North Main Street sidewalk project. Any questions from council? Anything from the public?
I have a question, but it's not on North Main Street. So should I wait till the end?
Sure. Any questions on the, on the bid? All right. Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries, seven to zero.
And then the Pico property, no real agreement on that other than we're going to attempt to find other grant opportunities that allow for acquisition and apply to them as they come. The one that we applied to in the past that requested that we have the acquisition report is not due until April of next year, so we'll keep that on the calendar if no other opportunity arrives. Mary Yardley Bridge replacement, there have been some increases in lead time and some costs, so we are evaluating options, and we'll be planning a centering to the borough in the near future to move forward with that. And then one of the new projects that's not on our list yet, but the elevation projects, inspections have started, and we are moving forward with elevation plans for all of the active homes currently.
Thank you. Questions for our engineer? We'll start from council first. All right. So we'll go to the public. I know Ms. Perlmutter has one, then Ms. Taylor.
Yes, I have been talking to several residents on Van Horn. These recent storms, there's been, another huge tree came down. I know that you attempted to mitigate it with one, at one portion, but it just ended up diverting the water to another portion. It's kind of like coming wack and old. The residents are very upset. They're concerned. I don't, they're living a nightmare every time it rains. And with these storms, they don't know if something's going to come down on their house or if it's going to take their backyard or worse. Plus, this is flowing into the canal, which may have contributed to some of the problems with the canal on the high water event. So again, I just don't know if you're working on it at all.
We are, and we had a meeting with all the impacted residents two weeks ago. DEP is moving forward with finding. They said that things are moving forward as quickly as we can happen, but they still have not provided us with financials for the mitigation efforts. But we already approved them to move forward with the removal of the fallen trees. We've already approved with the plumbing of the goalway that is now bare because of the erosion. And they are just struggling to get a contractor on board. But we are talking to them almost daily. I know Andrew is pushing it. He spoke to their solicitor for their counsel.
And there's no way to pressure or, I mean, it's just they're, they're living in here. And I just wish there was some way, if there's any way that we could help, maybe if there's anything residents in town could do. It's just a really bad situation for me.
We, I think, all agree. I mean, unfortunately, at this point, we have, we have done what we can do. We're continuing to do what we can do. You know, I think we all wish we could just wave a magic wand and make it better there. But until they get a contractor lined up to perform the work, you know, we're in a holding pattern, and we stay on top of it. As was mentioned there, DEP is moving forward with fines, so there are consequences there. But I know I've mentioned this before, these, government can be slow, and projects like this can be even slower sometimes.
And there's no fines that the borough can put on them? I mean?
When we discussed potentially moving forward with fines, it seems that the administrative cost to push that forward and bring it to civil suit would cost the borough more than our thousand-dollar fines. The fines that DEP can issue are $10,000 a day. So it makes more sense to put our efforts towards supporting DEP to work this toward that forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Could Ms. Coletti further detail why the bidding for the Mary Yardley River Bridge has been delayed over and over again? And why, I didn't quite catch much you said in your earlier report about crisis changes.
The lead time for the fabrication of the bridge has increased from three weeks to 14 weeks. And so, and there's also been an increase by about $20,000 for the cost due to material shortages and labor issues. So we? So we are evaluating if we want to go forward with the current vendor that we have or looking into other options to see if we can do something that can save the borough money.
Thank you. On top of which, we are still waiting for this to be fully permitted, perhaps which.
Which we need to have the final specs from the vendor to submit with the permits.
Before we can truly go. Right. We're a little bit caught in a tough cycle here. Thank you. All right, with that, um, we'll close out that section of the meeting and move over to Mr. Klosser, first listers' report.
Uh, thank you, but I have no report this evening.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayer, if you have any additional reports?
Nothing additional this evening, thank you.
You will move through to council member reports in that case. Mr. Curtin, you're up first.
No report.
Mr. Ross?
Uh, no report.
Ms. Segal-Morris?
And no report.
Myself, no report. Ms. Thompson?
No report.
Uh, we're going quick today. Mr. McCann?
Yeah, so Community Economic Development Committee met today and, um, one of the things that we talked about was, uh, technically Labor Day, the outdoor seating permit had expired, so talked about especially now with the new variants, um, and just reading even, um, cases are up 300% from last Labor Day, um, in that still people feel comfortable eating outside. We haven't heard any reports of, um, anything that happened, uh, in town either from, uh, Manager Johnson or even the chief, um, about disturbances from the outdoor seating. So I would make a motion that we extend it until November 30th, outdoor seating for the restaurants.
So moved.
All right, let's consider Mr. McCann the motion, Mr. Ross the second. Um, this is on the agenda under other business, but does anyone have objection to considering it now since that's what we're doing?
No.
All right, hearing none, and that is fine with me. Uh, so the motion would be to extend the outdoor seating waiver that's already in place through November 30th. Are there any comments or questions from council regarding that motion?
I would like to say something about that. Can you guys hear me okay? Cause it sounds a little sketchy in my head.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I just, my thoughts are about is that, um, we, this has worked overall, natural perspective here, this has worked really well for Yardley. And from a business perspective, they have to hire people and make a lot of plans and be able to keep their cash flow going. And I would like to see what we could do to say, you know, I don't know where this COVID thing is going and it seems to be working the way it is. Is there a way we can just definitely extend it? And if there's a problem or if we choose to say, you know what, this isn't working anymore, that we could take it back and reevaluate? Would the rest of the council be open to that?
Well, I think your answer is mad. I mean, the, the only issue with that is if it's open-ended and we can take it back at any time, you really haven't accomplished giving them certainty to make decisions. Um, that, that's my first observation. And then the other thing that John and David was there too and Paul and I talked about was with weather and, and snow, right, we sort of feel like if we get into December, the tents aren't really practical anyway, right? They're going to have the flaps down, they'll probably have to have heat in them and then when they have a snow event, they got to take them down. So we sort of felt like the most prudent thing to do was to give them certainty through the end of November. Um, but that beyond that, it made sense. If we have to reevaluate then, we can, but, but the most likely outcome was we probably weren't going to have tents through the winter anyway.
Thank you. I think too, Mr. Feiner, as far as if we want to permanently change what we're allowing the borough, the right course of action there would, would be to change our ordinance as it regards to outdoor seating. It certainly impacts parking as well. Uh, I think given the circumstances and the uncertainty this year, um, you know, it's an acceptable choice for us to just extend it through the end of this season as weather would permit folks to be outside. But if we would, uh, if we wish to continue this in a more permanent fashion, I think an update to the ordinance is probably the best way to go. All right, any other?
Sounds good.
Yes.
Sorry, any other from council discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, well, Mr. Applebaum first.
Thank you, David Applebaum, experience Yardley, running restaurants. Uh, when you said end of the season, which season were you referring to before I asked my other questions?
Weather that's warm enough to be outside.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know if you're hot or cold, but okay. Obviously, I have no interest in any restaurant directly, but through experience Yardley, um, I've worked directly with some of the restaurants in question. I believe the two that I'm thinking of are, um, the Yardley Inn and, um, the Convento. I don't know if there's any others, uh, that are concerned about tents. And the question that I have had from the two individuals, Frank Lyons and Michelle Mahalan, are whether this is going to extend past, uh, the Christmas holiday because they're concerned that they can't take reservations for, uh, different events that they do, that they lost out on last season because of how bad COVID was. So I'm suggesting, uh, that you extend it past November 30th. I understand and I heard the concerns about weather and snow, but is that based on a conversation with the tent company or, you know, I, I don't know if that's, I'm not accusing anyone of it, I just don't know if that really is an issue or if they just have to be timed up and they will work as they always have. Because I noticed that, uh, Michelle in particular, uh, had spent a lot of money heating those tents and was able to open up the sides, um, you know, because of actual time there. I'll stop there, but my, based on my conversations and their, um, hope is that we'll extend it past the Thanksgiving holidays, but into maybe the Christmas or New Year's holiday. Thank you.
I'll just interject. One of the things that we did talk about in setting that deadline at November 30th was the fact that once you start moving into the season where you're putting down the sides of the tent, putting in heaters, it's really like being indoors and really kind of defeats the purpose of having the outdoor, um, especially with the virus. We were particularly focused on the idea that the airflow being outside and when you put those down and put the heat on, it's really like being inside so they can move those events inside like they normally would if it was practical.
We, we did have issues last year with heaters. Um, I know Wes had to talk with a few, um, restaurant owners about heater use with flaps down, so that is a concern and not something we necessarily would have eyes on if they have the flaps down, we don't know if they have heater on, so it's definitely a safety concern in my opinion.
And I agree that that is a safety concern, but could you have a conversation with the owners now to find, you know, not just rely on my information, but.
Didn't he meet with them?
Did you meet with them?
Uh, we met with Frank.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, previously about the ordinance and outdoor seating.
We just spoke about, I'm sorry, hold me to, we spoke about this, uh, the day after the flood. And he asked me if I did talk.
All right, I'm going to jump in because we are, we are into the territory of a community and economic development meeting, which took place at 6:30 this evening. I encourage folks to attend if they have business items that they think might be pertinent to that committee. Um, for now, the motion that we are considering is an extension to November 30th and we have another public comment regarding that over here.
John Simone, Yardley Town Center. Can someone comment on how the extension of the outdoor dining would apply to any restaurant or facility that doesn't already meet the seating or parking requirements and so that it's not used as a shield to continue a, an existing violation?
I have a feeling that you're asking about a particular dining establishment. Um, we discussed this briefly at the time that we offered the extension, um, and right, the same rules apply to everyone, so.
Even someone who's in violation?
So, folks are allowed to have more chairs, more seating, and that's allowed to take up part of the parking space that's normally required under the ordinance. There are no additional conditions upon that, um, and I'm not going to use this opportunity to get into who is in violation of what. We certainly have several parties involved in this that are taking a litigious stance. Um, so I think that we will let, let this issue play out in a different arena than public comment.
Thank you.
Yes.
Scott, thirty-seven, South Main. Um, at the last extension, there was discussion that didn't make it in, uh, and, and none of this is actually written down anywhere as far as the guardrails or the guidelines for outdoor seating. It is a blanket gift through the code enforcement officer with the emergency declaration last year. So there's not any specifics to this that I've been able to attain. Um, but there was discussion at the last, um, extension of making it so that there was no additional seating. So if you're permitted, if, if Continental is permitted for 100 indoor seats, there should be 100 seats, cause that maintains whatever permitting that he's had before. Uh, we never, that was not actually read in under that circumstance because there were other issues, but I think that it should be now, um, at least to some degree, maybe some latitude. Um, I would suspect that it's not four times the seating. I would suspect that maybe if you have 100 seats as the Continental, you may be able to have 120 seats, but not 400 seats if you include the outdoor seating. So I would suggest, and I would like the council to consider, building in some guardrails to this, uh, because it is being abused. There's permits that are being exceeded by four times and that is impacting other businesses in an adverse way and that's not being considered. I would like that to be.
Thank you. Personally, I do agree that we had a need for guardrails. That was discussed before, it wasn't incorporated, but I will ask again at this time if, uh, anyone would like to make an amendment to the motion that we are considering.
Well, maybe that's a good point. I think Scott did raise a good point. I think David, maybe, I don't know if that's the best way to accomplish this, but what we're voting right now, I believe, in the motion is to extend what is currently in place for another, so can we get a, a very clear concise summary of what exactly is in place right now as a starting point?
There's no, I'm sorry, but there's no written guideline at all for outdoor seating.
So I thought.
Let's figure it out now, let's codify it, right? Let's.
But bouncing off of your previous comment, uh, President Bria about really having to change the ordinance, right? This decision was just kind of to temporarily not enforce the ordinance on parking. So we've been sending out communications, um, through code enforcement to restaurant owners. I believe there's been two or three emails reminding on occupancy limits and kind of general guidelines. We've been doing it in that unofficial pattern because we didn't want to approach it from an ordinance, um, perspective.
But I think the assumption there, and maybe Buck, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're not changing the ordinance, right? So what we are saying is we're not going to enforce, we're, we're going to instruct code enforcement not to enforce parking and to allow people to move indoor seating to outdoor seating, but there's been no action by this or previous councils to, to amend the ordinance in terms of expanding seating. So then I would suggest anybody who is using excessive seating beyond what they are allotted on an indoor basis, technically is in violation of that, but then that gets back to enforcement issue, but I think that's where we are, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, as I understand, this is a temporary accommodation, given the COVID emergency and all the things that went with it, um, it didn't amend any, um, you know, ordinance requirements or parking requirements or that sort of thing on the one hand. On the other hand, there were no specific conditions on the accommodation either. So if it's council's desire to kind of send that message in a more clear fashion, you probably should consider that. Obviously, you know, it was temporary until this weekend and now we're considering extending it a little bit further, so, um, in, in this, you know, quite frankly, can't go on, um, you know, forever. If, if council wants to allow for expanded, uh, outdoor seating in the borough, then it really needs to be done through the ordinance amendment process, as the President Bria already mentioned. So that's kind of where we are. I mean, you can continue the status quo through November, that's a couple more months, um, or if council so desires, you can place some conditions on that at this point in time. It really is an accommodation, so it's up to council to decide, you know, how sort of open-ended that is or perhaps, you know, specific requirements should be in these circumstances. And I think that's kind of what the heart of what we're discussing is extending this, but this would be the last extension that we're going into the winter. But you're right, we're getting to a point where it's going to become permanent. Um, you know, in setting guardrails now, um, I think it becomes much more complicated to those businesses that are using outdoor seating and certain we're trying to help. But I'm just going to say, in certain, we're trying to help businesses, not infringe, uh, and certainly keep people safe is intent of what we're, what we're seeking to do here. Um, and we're looking at from now, you know, in September, uh, just a number of weeks left until that expires, you know, at least in community economic development, I think it would have to be an order to change. You know, if we're going to go back to, as you're right, we've done multiple extensions at this point, um, but we're also looking at from a public safety standpoint of trying to keep them safe, trying to help those businesses, um, still keep people bringing in in the midst of another surge in the pandemic.
Ms. Promoter?
I agree that you should extend it. I think it's a good idea, um, for Business District, but I would like to say the situation up at the Tannery is another, it's a special situation. It's a residential area around that. Those people on Van Horn are having enough trouble with the plugs, the noise is starting again. There was conditional, no outdoor dining, it's limited to 40 seats, um, and it's, it's just not part of COVID. It was, this happened after that situation. The other thing I would like to say is public safety should come first and on Main Street, it's still a public safety hazard. I walk down there every day tripping over umbrellas. Um, they got some of the big, you know, objects out of there, but on Saturday and Sunday, the, um, seats are in the middle of the street. There's, there, it's just a public safety hazard. People with baby carriages have to go into the street to get around that. So, um, I have no problem with outdoor dining for any of the residents in the Business District, but I think it needs to be enforced in terms of public safety.
Thank you. Any additional comments on the extension? All right, hearing none, I will call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. All right, uh, Mr. McCann, we were in the middle of your report, can I assume we've concluded?
And we had initial discuss, discussion about long-term parking in the borough and, um, some potential solutions or something that hopefully will follow up more in community economic development, bring in more stakeholders and, you know, try to look at the issue more broadly.
Thank you. Mr. Feiner, if you have anything to report tonight?
Thank you, Matt, thank you.
Thank you. It closes out council member reports. Do we have any items for general discussion from council? All right, in hearing none, we'll go to our remaining item of their, under other business, uh, which is the collective bargaining agreement 2022 through 2025 for our police department, which I will turn over the floor to Ms. Segal-Morris to present that item.
Thank you. Uh, this evening, I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the Yardley Borough Police Department and the borough to take effect January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2025. This agreement includes a 5% increase for each of the four years of the contract. This increase will help bring our police department salaries in line with similar-sized departments in the county as well as a few other, um, adjustments and some of their other benefits.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Ms. Segal-Morris, seconded by Mr. Ross first. Any comments or discussion from council on this item? Anything from the public? All right, hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Congratulations. All right, barring any other business, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you.